He's not calling in, he's playing Lanza like six fifteen, six.
Yeah, where was he?
There you go.
San Antonio or?
Yeah.
Probably not.
Probably not.
He was at.
It's a hundred percent risk free.
If I go back that way, I think it looks more real.
Probably.
She ordered the senior citizen.
Freddy doesn't have a computer there. It's not six yet, is it? Six o'clock, we'll get started.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Christina, will we do the roll, please?
Fish.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Dorgensen.
Here.
Cole.
Here.
Lawrence.
Here.
Steen. Mayor Buck.
Here. We look for motion to approve the agenda, any add additions or corrections?
Move to approve.
Motion second to approve the agenda. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Approval of the minutes from the November second, November sixth meetings. Any additions or corrections? Look for motion.
Move to approve.
Motion second to approve the minutes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Approval of the claims, pages fifteen through seventeen, we had a chance to look them over. Any, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll look for motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion second to approve the claims. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. We have the consent calendar that includes three wage adjustments for employees and a plat of tracks one B and two A, a bending addition which is within our three mile jurisdiction. So we'll look for discussion or a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the consent calendar. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Visitors and timed items is next, and that's an opportunity for anybody that would like to address the council on any particular issue, whether it's on the agenda or not on the agenda. We just ask that you come forward and give us your name and address, and we limit it to five minutes. And if there's something that you want to visit about that's actually on the agenda later, you might want to wait until then, but you can do it now also. So do we have anybody? Seeing none, we'll move on. Public hearing, we have no public hearing. We, on old business, we have the second reading of ordinance six ninety-four, the supplemental budget. We discussed this last Thursday, moving some things around, some additions and subtractions. Any discussion?
I just wanted to give a shout out to Christina and the staff that as large as our budget is, I don't think that this is much that we're having to move around, so I just wanted to thank you for all of your efforts. You've done a nice job, and your staff.
I'll look for motion.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Motion second to approve the second reading of ordinance six ninety-four. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Standing committee reports, golf course. We've got the range servant purchase, which we'll ask Andrew to speak to.
Yep, so actually both these, this and then the mowers which we have next, both of these are budgeted items. The range servant is budgeted for this year and the mowers are for next year. The range servant is basically just automating our range ball purchase the way we do it. It'll all be done by the machine, no more of us manually filling them up, hauling them to the pro shop, selling them from there. So it'll help on labor and help streamline that process, and then the mowers are in the budget for next year. Just getting them ordered now, so we actually get them.
Okay. Any other comments, discussion? Look for motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion second to approve the range servant purchase. All in favor say aye.
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 Pose same sign. And we've got the greens mowers purchase. Look for motion on that.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion second to approve the green mowers purchase. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Parks and Rec, we have the park report on page thirty-one, and we have the twenty twenty-four pool fees that we'll look to approve.
Just while discussion kind of direction, pool fees were last increased in twenty twenty-one with the pool improvements. This one in front of park board, park board has recommended to leave the pool fees as is, so it's just kind of our yearly discussion on where you guys are at.
We just felt that with inflation for families these days, it would be appropriate to hold as is for the next year. So I would make a motion to approve those fees for next year.
We set those by resolution.
Oh, okay.
So we'll go back and review them. I don't think so either. We'll check the resolution, see if it says twenty twenty-three pool fees, we'll bring it back in front of you, otherwise.
Okay, park fees, discussion.
Park fees were set quite a while ago.
Twenty thirteen.
Thank you. They're a thousand dollars an acre when a property is plotted and then two hundred and fifty dollars per dwelling unit on the building permit. So if it's apartment building, they pay two fifty per unit. If it's a single family house, they just pay the two fifty. It's been a while since we looked at them, and they are by ordinance, they're in the ordinance. We did this when we did the subdivision regulations back in the day. And the reason we did it this way, we used to accept donations of land, which we would usually get the the not so good land that had limited use. This way we could purchase the land that we wanted for park development, as well as equipment.
Okay.
So, I mean, do you have, excuse me, mayor, do you have a, this was just a discussion item, but do you have an idea of, you know, I don't even know where to go with it, I mean.
In all of these fees that we're going to be talking about primarily with the parks and or sewer and water connection fees, park fees, you try to base those on potential improvements so that you're generating some cash flow to pay for those potential improvements. And there's always, you know, you don't know how many building permits you're gonna, you know, pull or how many acres are going to be plotted. So it's, it's kind of tough to figure it out. But that'd probably be the way to do it. Our park system is currently pretty much set. We don't really anticipate developing any new parks. You know, a typical park, if you purchase the land and then a typical play equipment, you know, like at Tallgrass, that's about two hundred and fifty thousand, and it serves a half mile radius. We can figure that out.
Our goal to be within a half mile.
About, and our shelter restroom, hundred thousand.
It would hire it out, yes.
Yeah, so, you know, you'd be looking at four hundred thousand and a half mile radius. We could take a look at that number and see what it looks like per acre.
Other cities do it this way, that we could look at it in comparison?
And that was, that was what I was gonna get back to as well. We can poll some of our comparable cities, neighboring cities, and see what they do. See what the ballpark is.
And I have been keeping track, and I probably should have put it on the agenda, the park fees breakdown. Park fees have been going towards either play equipment or land, and we're currently pretty far in the hole because of the five hundred and seventy-four thousand dollar piece of land that we bought back in twenty eighteen. And then we spent two hundred and seventy thousand roughly on Tallgrass play equipment. So we're about seven hundred and sixty thousand in the hole on that kind of balance. So it is not, it's not keeping up.
Well, just with the price of land, I mean, we, yeah. So I would think we probably need to increase it just from that aspect. But I just don't know, like, what's a reasonable amount either.
We'll take a look at our, our normal cities that we take a look at, typically Yankton, Vermillion, Spearfish, T. Harrisburg.
Nothing we need a motion on?
Nope.
Okay.
All of the fee items are just discussion tonight.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may, there is a groundbreaking tomorrow at four o'clock for the hockey field, or field isn't the right word, facility. So if anybody is interested, those folks have worked tirelessly for years and years. I don't know how many years it's been, but, so if you're able, it'll be out at Aspen at four o'clock.
They've done a great job, and I'm looking forward to being there at four o'clock tomorrow to thank them. Any other discussion on fees? Hearing none, we'll move on to public safety. We have a patrol vehicle opportunity, and on page thirty-five.
We hope this is the last time. The twenty twenty-two police interceptor has been once again delayed till twenty twenty-four, and we do have a small price increase of eight hundred and ninety-five dollars to switch to the EcoBoost engine.
Okay, I'll look for a motion on that.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion second to approve the patrol vehicle. Any other discussion?
We hope that this will be the last time we bring this item forward.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. And motion carries. And we have the body camera contract to, on pages thirty-six to forty-three. We'll have the chief update us on that.
So it's our normal contract renewal. Our body cameras are on five-year contracts, ran out, so in twenty twenty-four we'll start a new one. It is budgeted for, it's broken out, we pay it over five years, so it's just our, kind of our normal upkeep and our new contract.
Okay. Any questions, discussion? Chief, the, the contract for the actual cameras in the cars, is that a separate contract?
That is separate, yeah.
Same company, different contract?
Same company, different contract. We brought that forward early in the summer because we wanted to get on their schedule, because they actually come out and will install the new equipment after the first of the year. So that one's already been covered, this is for the actual body cameras. Yeah, same company, two separate contracts.
Perfect, thanks. Okay. I'll look for a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion second to approve the body camera contract. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Fire department reports on page forty-four, the chief isn't here tonight, but he'll note that we had fifty-six calls in October and four hundred and twenty calls so far this year. And that's just fantastic for a group of volunteers, and we can't thank them enough. So if you have an opportunity to thank a fireman, thank him.
And, and last Sunday night, they escorted Spencer, a little guy who's ill, into town from Mayo. The Valley Springs Fire Department was very instrumental in that too, and that was a really cool thing, so need to thank them for doing that too.
And we're always looking for more volunteer firemen. So, all right, we'll move over to administration. Tax abatements, page forty-five and forty-six.
Two tax abatements submitted and approved, recommended by the county for disabled veteran status.
Any discussion? I'll look for a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion second to approve the tax abatement. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. And motion carries. Stone Ridge Estates Phase Five subdivision construction agreement. Any comments from staff?
This is our standard subdivision construction agreement. This is what we require about developers. So this is with Van Busker on Stone Ridge Estates, and they plan to start construction in the spring.
Okay. I'll look for a motion.
So move.
Motion second to approve the Stone Ridge Estates subdivision contract agreement. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. And motion carries. We have resolution twenty-seven dash twenty-three.
This is for the city support for Aspen Ridge LLC to submit an application for financial assistance to the South Dakota Housing and Development Authority. This is out of that two hundred million dollar appropriation that was approved last, finally approved last year. I think about seventy-seven million has gone so far, if I remember right.
And how much is this one?
I don't have a number on it. It doesn't obligate the city to anything other than what we've already agreed to, which is normal, that we have the capacity for the infrastructure and that we will take over the infrastructure and operate it after it is installed.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion second to approve resolution twenty-seven twenty-three. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. And motion carries. Irrigation fees discussion.
Once again, we're just taking a look at fees. If we want to make any changes, we would take a look at that at the December meetings for effective January first. We currently charge seventeen dollars for the contractors and twenty dollars for the homeowners for a permit. We could change that to a one-time fee of thirty-four dollars, and that just covers our cost to issue the permit. If we want to expand services for final inspections, we would need to take another run at that number to account for staff cost.
What do we charge when somebody's remodeling a house or doing other types of building?
Like the flat fee projects, shingling, reciting. I think Egress Windows is in there, and those are thirty-four dollars.
And with those, do we go out and inspect them when they're done?
He goes out and does a file, I guess, Paul Wood.
So the thirty-four dollars basically covers just our cost to?
To issue the permit.
Issue the permit, so it's.
And Paul Wood had to go inside that, you know, the ones I think that are flat fee projects, he could see outside.
You know, I can't get an electrician, a plumber, anybody out for under a hundred dollars. I, I guess I would be comfortable increasing it, but it's not anything I'm gonna die on the mountain for.
I was just gonna ask a question, so this, this would go from collecting thirty-seven dollars down to thirty-four dollars? Would it be just a one fee, or would it be thirty-four dollars for the contractor in? Thirty-four dollars for the?
Currently, the rate is seventeen dollars for a contractor come in and install.
Well, I think it should look similar to other construction projects that people do in their houses, so I would be okay with the thirty-four.
Once, we'll, we'll come back with a resolution with the new list of fees.
Is that thirty-four dollars comparable to other communities our size?
We can take a look. Irrigation permits, it's probably gonna be a little hit and miss. We'll take a look.
Was there, for the thirty-four, for the other stuff that, that people come get permits for, what did we use to come up with that number? Was there some sort of guidance, was there? Yeah.
Um, a lot of that was, was the building permit fees were from a while ago, and then what we did is we looked at the ICC and saw where they're at, and so we increased it by that. So I think they used to be twenty-five? And then when we went through the whole, I think it was about two years ago, we went through that whole thing, and we wanted to get the, them more up to date. We just increased it by a percentage.
The, the building code, or the building officials issue a per square foot typical cost for the region for construction, and they also make recommendations for shingling, siding, windows permits that are a one-time fee. That's where that number came from.
I mean, also, it makes sense from a usability standpoint to have one number, I would guess.
Any other discussion? Okay, we'll move on. Plating fees?
More fee discussion. We currently do not charge for subdivision reviews or plat fees. These are what Sioux Falls charges. For instance, subdivision construction plan review would be a hundred dollars, development DEPs would be three hundred plus ten dollars per lot, and then new plats, they actually charge eighty dollars for the first two lots and ten for each additional lot. If it's a replat, it's a little bit more. We currently don't charge any of those fees. Nope.
Why?
Well, historically, we haven't. You know, the other thing, you know, we as, as public employees are paid to do a job, and this is kind of included in the job. I'm not sure if it's anything extra, but we could certainly take a look at charging. More and more cities are going to a fee-based system like this to offset costs since, you know, everybody's strapped for revenue streams. This would offset additional work by staff that's, that's done, that's out of the ordinary.
So to do a building permit would be different than the, you know, I mean, you're doing out of the ordinary work, or, I mean, you know?
Yes. No, the building permits, I mean, I think everybody charges for building permits. You know, once again, we can, we can reach out to our comparable communities and see if they've got similar fees. But it's not unusual.
Just the cost of time to have to include the plats, first they've got to go in the P and Z packet, then they gotta go in our packet, twice. Yeah, I, yeah, I mean.
You know, city engineer reviews the plats, takes a while to make sure that very few of them come through without issues. So there's, there's a review, usually a couple of reviews, comments back to the engineer, the surveyor. So the plating one, once they're approved, it doesn't take long to get through and get signatures. The DEPs, you know, that's, that's becoming much more intensive, I think. You know, some of those documents, DEP documents are fairly detailed. Staff takes a look at those, both public works and engineer. You know, that gets down into the nitty gritty of how big's the pipe, how deep's the manhole, where the manhole's located, where the water valve's located. So that can be fairly time-consuming.
Well, if we didn't have a city engineer, we'd be paying out of pocket to an engineering firm for the plats and the DEPs. So we've been eating that all these years, so I would encourage us to look at doing something there.
Okay, any other discussion? We'll move on. Streets. Work report was on page seventy-two. We have a change order on the Rushmore project. Change order number one, reducing the cost by a hundred and fifty thousand bucks.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second to approve, any other discussion other than hallelujah?
This is out of the ordinary.
Yeah. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. And then we've got the pay application number seven, and the final one on the Rushmore project. We'll look for a motion on that.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion second to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. And then the core area phase two B project update and bid schedule. Can you give us a little update on that, Tammy?
Yep, so this would be our reconstruction project for next year. We would like to advertise for bids on December thirteenth and the twentieth, and then do the bid letting on January fourth. And so just to, just a reminder that we did discuss adding in the sidewalks along Aspen Boulevard at the same time there was three different property owners. We do have signed easements for all of them, so they all are well aware of it. The other part of this is the railroad that is along Dogwood. There's two tracks right there now, what we would like to do is vacate one of them, and then we would have to replace the rail and the crossing on the other one, as well as we're gonna open cut that rail to place utilities underneath of it. So those two items would be separate costs, and then those agreements would be on the next council agenda.
Okay, we need a motion on this?
Sure, to set the, to set the bid dates.
All right. I'll look for motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion second to approve the core phase two B project update and bid schedule. Any other discussion?
So there's a cost estimate in here, Tammy, have you heard anything about, do you think bids are gonna come in better than that?
From talking to a couple other cities, there seems like their bids are coming in well. And that contractor, there seemed to be more of an interest with our contractors too. So maybe some of the projects are slowing down just a little bit, but I also don't want to jinx this either, those projects were also bid early, so.
So then, are we thinking that once we do this project, so that's next summer, then we're gonna kind of put a hold on things and see how finances look?
Well, well, you know, every year we take a look at our CIP, and we'll take a look at sales tax, which is really the driving factor in our projects. We'll take a look at that, probably in May-ish of next year.
And just keep in mind, this is construction cost only, so you would have design, construction, engineering, testing, and then the railroads are on top of this.
Okay, still looking for a motion on the bid schedule?
Boy, we got a motion.
We do, excuse me. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. All right, we'll move on. Transit fees, discussion.
Just a discussion, we haven't raised them since twenty twenty. We're currently at two dollars for the city of Brandon area. You have a list of other towns there and where they're at. They're anywhere from two to three dollars. One of them's two dollars and then plus twenty-five cents a mile, so, I mean, we're in that range. It's just where, discussion on if you'd like to raise them or keep them the same.
Are we the only city outside of Sioux Falls that has one of these in the metro area? I mean, all these other cities aren't close.
No, Del Rapids runs through the Watertown Transit System.
Brookings one.
Brookings, that's right. Brookings.
I think they're the only one, I don't think T.
I don't think T or Harrisburg.
Generally, young children that ride it, or maybe the older folks, I, my thinking would be leave it alone.
Primary users are preschool age kids. And then senior citizens can ride for free if they want to. Otherwise, you know, we ask for, we don't even ask for a donation, but they can certainly give a donation if they want to.
That would also be fine.
Okay, any other discussion? Let's move on to street lighting.
Street lighting, we have increased a little bit over the last few years as we're doing the projects at the core in Rushmore. We're replacing all the lighting in that area and updating that. So that has costs over time, and then now we're working on changing lights over to LED. So with the cost of that, recommending a three percent increase, which would be an average, average of nineteen cents increase for monthly bill for a resident. So that'd be my recommendation, but if you have any discussion on that. So that'd be my recommendation, but if you have any discussion on that.
Think reasonable?
No, we'll move forward with the resolution at the next meeting.
Okay, any other thoughts, discussion? All right, we'll move on. Water and sewer, uh, water treatment plant, uh, pay application. Any comments?
Uh, water plant is still moving forward. Um, they are going to start hauling in the precast units for the building here pretty soon. So probably the week after Thanksgiving. You'll see walls going up out there.
Move to approve.
Motion, second to approve the, uh, water treatment plant, uh, pay application number twelve. Any other discussion? Hearing not all, in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Connection fees, uh, discussion.
Just looking for some input on sewer and water connection fees. Couple of questions. One, how, how far back do you want me to go? And try to recoup costs? It'd be very simple to take a look at our two most recent water projects, the water treatment plant and the water tower. And try to develop some connection fees off of those two. We could go back to the original water plant, if you wanted to. Same thing with wastewater. It'd be pretty easy to go back to the Big Sioux Lift. And all three of those, I believe, are, no, the water tower's a, serves a, a volume charge. The Big Sioux Lift is pretty easy. That's a, that's a surcharge. The water treatment plant's a surcharge. There really hasn't been much, um, for wastewater. I, I certainly don't wanna go back to nineteen ninety-one and the original forced main to Sioux Falls. Probably would not include the reclamation of the ponds as new, new customers aren't going to utilize that. So basically, you're trying to figure out how much the, of the, of the new facility, a new customer should pay for upfront. They're buying their capacity at the treatment plant, for instance. So that surcharge is twenty-eight, twenty a month. I gave you a spreadsheet the other day. It's kind of an increasing one. We could just go with a flat fee. You know, the, the water tower, that one's a tough one, 'cause really, we're, it's not new capacity in the water tower. It's actually building capacity what we should already have in our system. You know, we should have a million and a half plus elevated storage. We should've had it a while ago. So I, we can certainly include it in there. So that's my question. How far back do you want me to go to take a look at these, and do you want just kind of a flat fee or a variable one?
Do, do we know, like, so we have from twenty-seventeen, it looks like the, is that for water connections?
Yep.
The top one is water.
And then the bottom one was sewer connections. We said that in two thousand nine?
Correct.
And haven't changed them since two thousand nine?
Nope.
Okay, do we know? I may hate to go back to the well, but do we know what Sioux Falls charges for their sewer connection fees?
We'll take a look. We'll do the same thing. We'll, we'll get, take a look at those comparable cities.
You know, because I, I look at the east side of Sioux Falls as being probably the closest thing that we need to judge ourselves against when it comes to our sewer fees, our water fees, and what our utility bills are, because um, people are moving to the east side of Sioux Falls. So, um, it would be interesting to know what they charge for their sewer connection fees and their water fee, water connection fees, I guess. That, that's one I would be interested in.
Christina took a real brief look at Sioux Falls, and, and they've got cost recoveries on their sewer fees. Really, their connection fee is their, um, the charge, the, the, why am I drawing a blank? Yeah, their SDC charge, thank you, twenty-nine, ten, uh, per connection. That's their, that's their connection fee for sewer. And that, they did a whole study, that would've been in eleven, twelve, thirteen, where they back, went back and amateurized out their historical costs, for instance, at the treatment plant. How much that original treatment plant, as well as upgrades cost. And then that is our residents and their new residents buying their capacity at the treatment plant.
When you say twenty-nine, ten, you mean twenty-nine dollars and ten cents?
No, no, no. Two thousand nine hundred and ten dollars.
So their sewer connection fees are two thousand nine hundred, and ours would only go up to like four hundred?
Yep. Because we really haven't taken a look at
Who we charge the SDC?
We charge the SDC charge.
So Tim, are you saying that, I, I mean, I think in the past, we kinda were trying to compare ourselves to like Harrisburg and, and T. And now you're, you're feeling that for people that wanna be in the Brandon City, Brandon Valley School District, they can move here, obviously, or they can go the east side of Sioux Falls. So we need to try to be comparative to that. Is that what you're thinking?
Well, I mean, truly, it's probably the whole Sioux Falls metro area is what we need to be comparative to, but even more importantly, the east side of Sioux Falls. Now, you know, to look at their sewage connection fees, we're utilizing their sewage treatment facility the same they are, so. Um, and, you know, when you look at a new development, the connection fee, you know, you should probably pay to become part of the city, whereas if you're already a part of the city, you shouldn't have to pay an extra surcharge so that other people can become part of the city. Does that make any sense?
And that's what that, that, that spreadsheet I gave you Thursday night at the briefing meeting, based upon a surcharge, the, uh, connection fee based upon the surcharge for the water treatment plant. So it's twenty-eight, ten, or twenty-eight, twenty a month per current customer. So if you moved in in twenty-twenty-two, you're on, you're already paying that twenty-eight, twenty a month. And that's three hundred and thirty dollars a year that you're already paying. So you're buying your capacity if you moved in in, in twenty-twenty. If you move in in twenty-thirty, you need to pay, you should pay for your part of the plant. Not just from the day you move in, but from when we started paying for it. So that's why that, that's an increasing number, and, and at the end of thirty years, it gets a little expensive. I think it's ten thousand or roughly ten thousand um, for a, a one-inch meter for a connection.
So so in twenty, uh, looking at this, correct me if I'm wrong, so in twenty-thirty, anybody that moved into the city or built in the city, their water u- utility bill would start out at two hundred and twenty-eight dollars a month? Correct, with the surcharge, plus water.
No, no, two twenty-eight a year.
No, this is, uh, so on, on the twenty-thirty, it says twenty-seven oh seven, two thousand seven hundred and seven annual.
That'd be their connection fee.
This would just be a connection fee, or would this be the monthly?
Just a connection fee, and then they would pay the twenty-eight, twenty a month surcharge.
Okay.
Connection fees are on their building permit. So these connection fees that we're talking about are on their building permit.
I just
So if they moved in in twenty-thirty and it was twenty-seven hundred bucks, um, that would be
Be a one-time
It would be a one-time fee to buy for the previous ten years, seven years.
Wait, do you have a copy of this spreadsheet?
I, I, I don't, with me
Since somebody was absent Thursday night. You can take a picture of it.
I'll get it to you. So just, it's just a concept. Um, I'm not sure if anybody uses it that, or, uh, connection fees that way. Usually, they just kinda set a number. We could pick, i- i- it's a thirty-year term, so look at year fifteen, and we could charge that for everybody.
Okay, any other discussion?
So yeah, the, the, the questions I had was how far back do you want me to go? Please just say the water treatment plant and the water tower.
Yes.
I don't wanna go back any further.
Right.
And then
That was my thought.
Yeah, the, the Big Sioux Lift would be pretty easy to take a look at. And then as we proceed with the new forced main to Sioux Falls, we could factor that in. And anytime you do a big project, whether it's the, uh, the second water tower or another lift station somewhere, we would then factor in those costs into a, into a revised connection fee.
Would this have an effect on the east side trunk?
No.
Okay.
Well, I, I shouldn't, the, the, if we proceed with the, the east side trunk this coming summer, no. The residents that would build out there would certainly get a connection fee.
Yep. Okay. All right. Any other discussion? Let's move on and talk about the, uh, water rates. Twenty-four water rates.
Uh, I'm looking at water rates, just kinda doing projections on O and M projects that, that we have, so, you know, we want have a little spreadsheet that kinda does a projection on water accounts and usage and where we think we'll be at. Last year, we did not increase the base in volume because we had the surcharge that was added on there, that twenty-eight, twenty a month that was added on there, so we did not adjust those. So looking at some numbers that I know of today, I'd recommend a four percent increase, which would be about a dollar fifty-eight. For, if they use six thousand gallons, it'd be about a dollar fifty-eight a month.
That's just for water?
Seems reasonable.
Right.
Yeah, I've never wanted to say, yeah, raising rates, but a dollar fifty-eight, I mean, Raleigh's time goes up, I mean, cost to operate and maintain these things, it's going up, so that seems reasonable.
Historically, we've tried annually to do annual revisions just to keep up with inflation. We, we get those increasing costs as well.
Okay. Here's one thing, I will create a resolution for next meeting.
All right. Aspen Ridge Utility Upsizing Agreement. Give us a
Um, this is our standard agreement for upsizing as well. They have some water sewer storm sewer upgrades that, uh, were not part of the TIF. And so they have it kinda broken down in that cost estimate. And then there's a map also to show what utilities were upsized for future development.
Uh, sixty-five thousand for water upsizing and thirty thousand or so for sanitary sewer and storm.
Okay. Any comments? Look for a motion?
Second.
Motion, second to approve the Aspen Ridge Utility Upsizing Agreement. All in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign. And motion carries. We don't have any other, uh, any new business, and we don't have a need for an executive session?
No.
That I know of?
You've got, uh, nope, we don't. Uh, you've got the fund balance report. You've got the sales tax report. Um, one thing to note, the state has discontinued the remote sellers' sales tax report or the online sales tax revenue. Um, so
And what was the reasoning for that?
The what was it, the Abrahams? Anyway, the law that required that the online retailers to submit their sales tax numbers, uh, they've exceeded that target. So the state doesn't keep track of it anymore, and that led to the reduction in the sales tax rate. Because when they implemented the agreement with the, the online retailers, if my memory serves me correctly, once a certain amount of sales tax was generated, the state would reduce the overall sales tax rate. And that trigger has been hit. So they aren't keeping track of the online sales anymore.
How much was it reduced?
The
The sales tax rate?
Point three.
Point two.
Point three.
Just for online?
No.
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 For everybody.
Everybody.
But if we buy local or we buy online and have it shipped here, we get the sales tax.
Correct.
So if you can't find it here, don't drive to Target because they'll get the sales tax, and that will help their roads and parks. If we want more roads and parks, we have to have it shipped to your door.
Yes.
In Brandon.
Yes.
Yes, and then we'll get the sales tax. Easy peasy.
We encourage that.
Okay.
And that's it. That was the highlight for sales tax.
Okay.
Plus, I do wanna point out that if you're gonna, you know, have libations for the holidays, do it in Brandon, 'cause we need that third penny sales tax.
I, I'm the chamber rep, what can I say?
Uh, how are we doing with sales, speaking of sales tax, with the expansion for businesses, Tammy? Are we still on track for everything that we've heard about that's coming?
So far, so good, and I think there's gonna be a couple new ones coming as well.
Terrific. That's fantastic. That's about as good a news as we can get, so. All right, uh, we'll look for a motion to adjourn. Motion, second to adjourn. All in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. We're adjourned. Yeah, happy Thanksgiving.